Yeah.
I'm not as many as I thought. Every time you come up on Friday, I move forward for two hours.
So what are we getting ready to?
Okay, before we get started, for those of you that would like to join us for a moment, prayer.
Dear Lord, thank you for this study and all your many blessings. Lord, go with us as we make decisions for Stokes County Schools. Lord, please be with and strengthen all of our staff, students, administrators, everyone affected daily. Lord, just let them know that we support them and want your hand of protection over them. Go with us this evening and pray that we have a good meeting in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you for hosting to our October nineteenth regular session of official college work. We have the approval of the agenda. I've had time to review it. If we have any modifications or alterations we need to make.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as per standing.
All right, do I have a second? President, see if you can say aye.
Aye.
Both, so move. Good news. Well, we were quick on having King Elmer here to announce areas of the... They were standing, I called anybody else, but I don't think I'm just stuck with the leg. Does everybody do tonight? It's definitely silent. Y'all ready? She's not ready. You ready?
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Rogers, the board, Dr. Rice. Thank you for having us here today. We are really excited to bring to you a project that we've been working on for quite a while. It is something that I believe has been in the work of planning in these amazing teachers' minds for quite some time. We've had a space that we were just waiting for the right time to get into use. And our teachers, in their brainstorming and hard work last summer, put together something really special for our kids. We've got Amber Stargren up here working the computer, Marcia Saunders, Tina Klaffelder, and Mr. Pritchett came with me as well. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Saunders, and she's going to kind of talk you through what that project contains.
And Ms. Saunders, I'm going to ask you to speak directly into your mic. We have one board member that's remotely in that building outside of the office.
I'm going to just send you again for having us and letting us share our excitement about this project with you all. So as Mr. Rice said, we had an area in front of the pre-k building at King Elementary. This is our before picture. As you can see, it was kind of just a completely unused space. It was a lot, there were a lot of roots, dead fruit, tree roots that were grown in that area. Some old deteriorated mulch that was just kind of compacted into the ground. It wasn't a safe area, so a lot of the children didn't access. And over the years, we've had a lot of conversations about what to do. At one point, extra parking was considered. We considered another area for a first-class playground area that we have in the back of the building. But in considering what would be best to use for our children and ways to enhance their learning, we decided that an outdoor learning environment would be the best scenario to add to our building. So we, the reasons that we decided that was that there are lots of studies that have shown that students who have, who learn outside have more opportunities to develop a sense of self, independence and confidence, creativity, decision-making and problem-solving skills, empathy, motor skills, and self-discipline initiative. We also considered some things in doing our research, such as that students who experience an outdoor learning environment are more attentive. We've learned that they have a better ability to read, to recall information that was shared with them, which helps the learning process. Consistent exposure to nature decreases stress and anxiety, which unfortunately is something that we do help our preschoolers through. Even at three, four, and five-years-old, children have lots of exposure to digital screens, especially in the age that we're living in right now. So outdoor learning allows students to put their focus back on nature. Outdoor learning environments just help kids to be physically active, just naturally being outside. And children are motivated to walk in groups and enhance social skills and just to use their senses to be able to learn and explore. So that's kind of a summary of the information we used to help make this decision. And then the purpose specifically for our outdoor learning environment, we decided that we wanted to enhance cognitive skills, social skills, literacy, fine motor skills, and science and creative expression. And you can see there are purposes, the different areas that we've added to this learning environment that will help address all of those learning areas. So we developed, we started with a plan. We met with people from Stokes Partnership. We researched other outdoor learning environments and kind of picked the pieces that we felt would be most beneficial to our students. And this was the vision that we initially came up with. And so in order to make those things happen, of course, we needed some money. So we started to do some fundraising. We started a GoFundMe campaign. And then the teachers all met and went out to local businesses as well to explain the project and ask for support. So in doing that, we were able to get eighty-five different individual donors to contribute and make local businesses. And this is just an example of the flyer that we use to help get the work out of our projects. Okay, sorry. And then we just wanted to highlight some of the community support that we have, and we're really proud of this. We've had donors range from families of former students, one of the former pre-k students who was in our program last year. Their family actually heard about the project and donated all the materials and the labor to build one of our mud kitchens. We have several local businesses, former employees of our school system, current King Elementary and Stokes County Schools employees, friends and families of some of our staff members, and the residents that are family in the surrounding area who didn't even really have a direct tie to King Elementary or the pre-k program, but heard about this project and wanted to give support. So this is just a list of our bronze-level donors. We have fifty-five different donors in this category, and they are all listed there. And then we had nineteen donors who classified in our silver level category. And thirteen donors in the gold level. And then we had eight platinum-level business sponsors. And so this brings us to some pictures of the process, and then we'll get to the finished project. So this was the initial phase of the process, which was just clearing that land and again removing all those dead tree stumps and roots and the mulch that had been compacted. And this is, these pictures show B and D Kaiser. He came out and helped clear that, which saved us a lot of time and effort. So that was, we're very appreciative of that. And this was a King Elementary work line that we had. We had, of course, all of the teachers and teacher assistants and then several other volunteers that came and helped spread mulch and sand and gravel dust in the area. And this is the, these are the guys from King Sand and Supply who donated the gravel dust and the sand. And the mulch, yes, thank you. And then this is just some of the process of some of the components being built. Those are the mud kitchens that we added. And there is the completed project. So just remember that to that before picture that we started with, and this is what we have today. And we'll get into some close-ups of some of the areas. This is the mud kitchen, dramatic play area, three mud kitchens, picnic tables, and then all the accessories that they need to use there. The art area with an easel on the fence. And then again, we have lots of materials that are in a deck box that are stored that we can switch out to use, different materials daily. A dinosaur table, which is already a big hit with some of our kiddos. The reading area, so we have lots, again, we have the deck box that will hold all of our books that we can switch out. Some nice soft pillows, chairs for them to be able to read books outside. The dramatic play stage with lots of clothes where they can role-play, even the tree stumps for seating so they can put on a play. And this is a good spot to highlight, too. We've also shared with kindergarten, fifth-grade teachers at our school that we would love for them to use this area as well. They have a book study and their children would like to come and add to the book. The gardens that we'll get to know just in a minute when they're learning about the life cycle of plants. We definitely want to share this area with the rest of our school as well. A fairy garden. And these are the raised beds. So again, we have a garden center there with watering cans, shovels, pots. They're going to have gloves so they can get in there and do the planting themselves and learn firsthand about the life cycle of plants. And the construction zone and sandbox. And then we'd like to give a special thank you to Ricky with the maintenance department and all his guys who came out and made sure that our new sign was installed at the top. I'm not sure if you remember, but in the before picture, that area at the top where that beautiful King Elementary school sign is, which is white, chipped in peel and paint. So that makes a huge difference in the aesthetics of the area. And then the garden rail is a great safety feature, just in case any cars get close to that area. And the fence just provides some privacy for the students that are working in the outdoor learning environment. So we just want to say thank you to all the individuals and businesses who helped with this project. Their contributions are going to help our students in so many ways. They're going to make lots of academic and social gains that wouldn't have been possible just with indoor learning. And this project will help impact hundreds of students for years to come. And lastly, a huge thank you to Mr. David Klaffelder. David is Tina, who's with us tonight, his husband. And David has just devoted himself to this project as much as we have. He has painted and built components for every different area of our learning environment in one way or another. And without David, we would have had to have lots more money and a lot more time to make this project happen. So we can't thank him enough. And that's it. Thank you for letting us share with you.
And since it's outside, we would love to have you come visit when you would like. I believe that board members can come visit whenever they would like, even though we're strictly visitors. We'd love to show you around and let you see this place. Thank y'all very much for letting us share with you. Any other comments on the board?
I just think it's amazing. Thank y'all for your time and dedication. And I think about how happy and excited these kids must be to get out and experience all these different things that maybe they weren't, you know, getting to before. And thank y'all for sharing.
Simply put, your passion and your drive to do something different and make a change makes you a predator.
And I like thanking for this great initiative to turn a little lot that was just an ice floor, really, into something fabulous that children could run to play and enjoy. Have gamers off it probably all their lives because it's such a great play area that you established. And especially that little truck somewhere.
Y'all.
The truck, and herb lepers, and all that, and planting, and did the stage here, and then sharing that with other grade levels. That's so nice because I know teachers will do that. Whoever thought of the stuffs to put there will remember for sitting, that was great. So thank you. Thank you for sharing with us.
Okay, the agenda for each regular monthly meeting will include a time period for citizens to address the Board of Education through public health. Prior to each meeting, a form will be available for any individual or group to indicate a desire to address the Board of Education and the topic to be addressed. A three-minute time limit will apply to each speaker. Groups are to select one spokesperson to address the Board of Education on the groups behalf. Members of the Board of Education will not respond to individuals who address the Board of Education, except to request clarification if needed. Only in cases of emergency will information received during the presentation be acted upon at the time of presentation. Grievances, complaints, or concerns related to individual school personnel or students will not be heard at this point. Other channels have been established for the consideration and disposition of agreements, complaint or concern that involves school personnel or students. The superintendent will discuss with and make available to any individual or group the policies and procedures for this purpose. At this time, Ms. Paul Jack, do we have anybody to sign up for public comments? Last chance. Moving on to consent agenda. Approval of work session minutes for our cover fifth and approval of the fundraising required.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, if you have a motion to approve consent, do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Messing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ms. Tucker? All right, so move. Discussion, discussion of I-Ready results. Dr. Rose, Mr. Rose, Zar, all the intended questions, please proceed.
All right, board members, I will go ahead and start talking through this while Ms. Paul Jack pulls it up for me. Thank you, Ms. Paul Jack. So we completed our benchmark window for I-Ready. And we got to meet, there were three personnel assigned to us, Jennifer Williams, Rob Haden, and Kate Colford. And they met with us for the initial results and helped us to see how we compared to national averages for the nineteen-twenty school year. And then also compares to the national averages for this upcoming school year. So we talked about those things with them, and we talked about possible learning loss due to our time away for COVID. So today, I just want to talk about how our district performance compares and then how we have done with our game loss ratio from winter to fall. All right, so I want to start with math. We now have a five-tiered system, and you can see how that is broken down. When we look at historical data for national norms compared to Stokes, we can see this year compared to national ones last year. And if you'll go ahead and click full two times, I'll make those pop up. Thank you. That's fine. On the far left, you can see how this looked with I-Ready in eighteen-nineteen. And then you can see how the data looked for this past fall. And then the third column we see there is us. And you can see that we fall directly in the middle. We're slightly higher than the national averages at this time for how we performed initially. Next slide, please. This will show you the breakdown by the elementary grade levels. Grades two through five, we have approximately fifty percent tested in the building, while others were at home completing the assessment. The folks from I-Ready did share with us that in grades four and five, we dropped in the grade and increased in our areas of red. They did tell us that this was a trend in other districts. So our mid-level students were decreasing. All right, this is the same graph that this one goes for our middle grades. The majority of these assessments were taken at home. Students were struggling with it. To get logged in, they helped them out that first week that we came back from our first week of hybrid. That does open the door to possible Googling vocabulary or processes for solving some of the equations. The recommendation from I-Ready was for us to adjust the instructional level to match student performance while we're looking at their personalized pathways. So what that recipe means is that if we see that our students are getting really frustrated, we can adjust the learning path accordingly to help them out. Next slide. All right, this graphic is going to show you the districts change from fall to winter and then to this fall in cohorts. So the very first line that you see was the grade level before, the winter before, and then this fall for how they increased. The chart there at the bottom will show you the historical national annual loss on the bottom. And then it will show you how we compared on the top with this past year where we were out after March thirteenth. With that being said, students moving from grade three to grade four did show the highest loss. But from fall to winter of nineteen-twenty, there were some significant gains as well. So we showed a significant growth moving from the fall to the winter of last year. Next slide. This is the same graph for our middle grades. You can see that the national norms, we typically rise a couple of points from winter to fall. We have our biggest discrepancy in the seventh grade transition. This is the biggest difference as compared to not COVID year.
Can you say that again?
Sure.
That's just that last sentence.
Hold on, can you go back one thing?
Fire.
Hold on, just a second. Right there. Okay, this was our math with the reading, with the math levels, okay, for middle school. And on that one, again, at the bottom, you see how we nationally trended, and then the top is how we actually performed. So we did decline a couple of points. You know, you can see that there with fifth to sixth, sixth to seventh with the decrease. All right, so this is the same, yeah. And then with slide eight, we're going to look at the same information for reading. Our reading numbers are comparable to both the current testing cycle and the current testing trends that you see there. You can see that we performed fairly well across the board. All right, next slide. All right, this shows comparison national norm for eighteen-nineteen school year and nineteen-twenty school year. Fourth grade testing for reading had to be completed at home. And that does open up a possibility for the use of additional resources. So our numbers there could possibly be inflating. Again, with that though, if we're seeing that students are struggling, we will be able to adjust their levels. All right, here's the same information for our middle grades and looking at the reading. The grade areas are higher than other districts' results, which may indicate inflation. Again, we have a lot of students who were taking this at home. If neither, we can adjust that pathway as well. When you look at these numbers, you'll see that really we are in the ballpark across the board with how we are comparing to past years until you get to four or five. Typically, you would see some significant gains moving from the winter to the following fall. We only showed the two points of growth with that one. And then typical gains for grades seven and eight were not met. Now honestly, I was pleased with the growth that we had from fall to winter. And that was something when they came and did the results with us last year. I felt really good to see the high growth that was taking place. We had stretch growth in most places already. We're getting stretch growth in a lot of areas for our middle schools. The barrier to in-person instruction may have caused the result that you're seeing there, where we don't see the growth in sixth to seventh and seventh to eighth. Do you all have any questions to add information for me?
Exciting questions.
What are we going to help students that are behind?
So with, yes. With the middle school, each time that we do our PLCs, I am asking them to report how they are using the toolkit. That is a resource that we have purchased, and it's directly matched to the standards. And that's something that we want to see being used consistently, consistently. Also, I want to see the personalized pathway, how it's being used. It's a personalized pathway of learning for each student, and it is set based on this diagnostic that they do. So they should be in each subject forty-five minutes a week. And then we can also see the pass rate that they are having within that. So that's something that we want to monitor carefully this year. And again, at each one of the PLCs with middle school, that's something that we will talk about. The other thing that we have would be the math progressions. These do address specific standards in math, and then it addresses the skills as well to fill the learning gaps with, basically it's making recommendations for instruction. That will show how the students perform, and it shows us last year as well, so we know where we need to fill gaps for those students. And then the last one is the tools for scaffolding instruction. That's one that goes along with comprehension progression. This is going to guide instruction on specific reading skills and give student and teacher recommendations as we move through that. It's a couple of tools that they have added to the program course.
So would a teacher offer, you know, a certain focus area for a child? Or would they offer what I-Ready offers, pretty much what I-Ready is focusing on for that child?
I-Ready can help to drive you to that with the diagnostics. And then it will also do groupings and make recommendations for what you can focus on within that as well. I mean, a teacher is more than welcome to supplement those recommendations, too.
Can you also, to proceed, because the child is struggling, they can't make class. They say they're struggling with something in the classroom, you need to build a plan right now.
Yeah, or like back up and review something. Yes. Long-term skill.
I was going to ask, please, about the I-Ready. How many, how many minutes a day do students, do you have I-Ready for math and I-Ready for reading so far?
Yes, ma'am.
For both. So how many minutes a day do teachers in class spend on the I-Ready or reading?
We want to look more at a weekly total. They can do more if the teacher chooses to. But we'd like to see them in forty-five minutes per math and forty-five minutes for reading each week. And then also. Yes, ma'am.
We're averaging around thirty. So the teaching assistance, are everyone's doing the I-Ready for the students?
It just depends. Some of the teaching assistants are part of the learning plan and helping with it, and then... And then in some schools, they are, in some schools they're not. Just depends on the plan, the principal.
It's kind of the principal decides to, to kind of implement.
The already. It is the teacher's ultimate responsibility, because it is our universal spread.
And there's a lot of different ways to implement it. I mean, it can be something that we, you know, require them to do when they're off campus and build that in, and the teacher can monitor by looking at that personalized pathway as well. So I can see reports on every single kid, on how many minutes they're in, what the pass rate looks like, which deals in.
So they can do the already for reading at home?
You can do it in the classroom. I mean, there's a lot of different ways to address that.
So a parent, if the child was behind, or they felt like they needed extra help, parents could kind of launch for that at home several when they could sense in the already.
Yes, ma'am.
How, what regular was that?
Eight months, make three weeks. You're welcome.
Ms. Tannen, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry for my question. As far as principals now, you know, start to utilize tutors more as well to help some of the elementary students that they might feel are kind of lacking. I know we've seen more and more tutors.
There are all, there are all other types of addressing. I mean, they can choose to use, you know, tutors to assist in the programs, to address the needs of students from this. This is a diagnostic with a lot of tools to address our needs that we see from the diagnostic.
And the next already assessment will happen when? And we'll hear from you.
That would be our one-term primary program that will be done first of January.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beginning Teacher Support Program Plan.
Good evening, Board and guests. Tonight, our Beginning Teacher Support Plan, there are not really many changes to this plan from what you approved last year. With the exception of, if you'll look on page one, under the four items that are numbered there, it says collect BT data for the state of the teaching profession report. And that includes a survey. So the state had determined that they were not getting a good response rate on the surveys coming in from the first-year beginning teacher as well as their principal. And so they wanted school districts to include this into the plan. The other things will remain the same, except for we are not doing face-to-face professional development for our beginning teachers this year. We are doing virtual professional learning opportunities for them. We have one in September. We will continue to have more during the year. They also, before the school year starting, they did have some orientation time at their school level covering many of the things that are listed at the bottom of page one and on the end of page two. The mentor continues to play a very vital role in their support and their retention with step scanning schools. So that relationship is very important. We have some very excellent mentors who are very skilled already in the classroom who do a great job of supporting these people and modeling for them effective teaching behaviors. And they also help act like them to the community and things there so that they can really get involved in their school outside of the regular school in terms of the community. Then, of course, the evaluations, we will continue to follow those that are mandated by the State Board of Education that are also into state law. We do require that our mentors be rated at least accomplished on three of the five standards if they are on the process of evaluation where it's their year to renew their teaching license. But if it's not that year, then they have to be rated accomplished on standard four, which is instructional delivery. That's kind of a big overview of this plan. I will be glad to respond to any questions you may have.
Ms. Knight, any questions? Ms. Spencer?
How many times do they meet with the mentor?
Generally, we ask that they meet with them at least weekly. And then they send in a report, a Google report that lets us know how many times they met, what kinds of activities and things they supported that beginning teacher with during that particular month. The principal, the mentor, and the beginning teacher sign up on that report so that we can make sure we have accountability in this process with the kind of support that the mentor is getting.
Is that the...
No, that's been ongoing for quite a while. If there are any concerns in terms of the lack of support or maybe not covering the things that are outlined in this plan, then we ask folks to be sure and let me know so that we can look at that place. But sometimes the mentor and the mentee that they're working with, that relationship just is maybe it's not the right setup, so we can always make a change. But we want that person's time in the classroom in their first three years to be a very successful experience, so that relationship is critical.
So they can change if it doesn't work out.
Yes, ma'am, they surely can. You're welcome.
Ms. Tannen, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Looks like Trump administration extends free meals for kids for an entire school year. I will leave you up.
Good evening. We are very, very excited that on October ninth, they announced that this waiver that we've been feeding under has been extended for the entire school year into June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. That will allow us to continue using, we use the FSSFSC program, which is a self-service feeding program in our area, so that we can serve all schools at no cost. The next part of it is we can serve meals outside of the typical required groups, which means they can go to classrooms, they can go curbside. Wherever we can take the food, we can take it. Wave the meal pattern as necessary. So if we can't get into the garden, they do give us the leeway that we could substitute with another option. We're supposed to have five different components in the bag. But if we're missing, if we can't get the fruit or vegetable in, we can't sell it for something else with that waiver. And without parents and guardians pick up meals. So like I said, we're just very excited that this continues. I think this is great for families and, and the children to get nutritious meals.
Ms. Knight, any questions?
Currently, are any extras being sold?
No. Well, in the high school and middle school, we're selling drinks.
That's what I wondered, you know, if a, if a child did have their meal, or maybe they only like one or two things on, you know, what was their other option to, you know, purchase something additional, you know, if they had things to do so or would like to?
We have discussed that. And it's kind of a, when we say there's free meals, it's not a free buffet. It is a free reimbursable meal. And so we've discussed if we start, if somebody finishes their meal, go buy it and be able to buy more food. But we're, you know, part of the thought is if they go up there and then start charging and they're accumulating debt and their parents start saying, well, what is their debt now? If there's that, so if we go to that, which we, we may very soon, we're just, but we're, we're still kind of weighing out some of those options and checking on some of that before we move that direction. But we got to make sure we have a very clear communication plan if we do that. Because again, we don't want people shocked when they hear free meals all year and then they start getting charged.
So is that why, has there been minimal to little concerns over that? Or are you hearing it's one of their...
I'm not aware of any of that.
I've heard of a couple of my managers said maybe one or two students, but not many at all have even asked for it. And, and like I said, this, you know, the way they pass out the meal as a unit, it would, sometimes they're not in the cafeteria to be able to pull up the point sale to make sure that they have money on their account. And see, this way we're not having money.
It's kind of simplified, I mean, I'm just...
Yeah.
Well, and some, some are getting their food and going to the classroom to eat. And so they're, they're finishing up there and not coming back and forth for seconds too.
Ms. Spencer?
What is the portion size say for the, is the portion size the same for elementary and middle? And then is it the same now for high schools?
Middle, uh, middle and high are a different serving size. But still, it's not a really big serving size. It's still, you know, two ounces of meat, a half a cup to a cup of fruit and vegetable, a roll would count, or two slices of bread would count as your grain, that portion of meal serving. So it's the serving size we're supposed to eat.
So what happens if the kid takes the meal? You know, it's offered a meal, especially in the high school, you know, they get it. They just want it for the seventh day. Or they don't take it? Is there a way that, do you have to throw this meal away at the end of the day?
Yes. Yes, we do.
So we're losing any money without this free meal program?
No, because we're getting away from our lunch. They take the meal now. If they want to take it and, because, you know, we're going to share a table, because then you've got people touching inside the bag, you know, spreading germs that way. But as far as if they just was to sit down and hold meal and not touch anything in it, I mean, me and the teacher in that classroom does have that, you know, that time to say if anybody wanted that. If not, at the end of breakfast or lunch, it wouldn't even be part of it.
But I didn't know if there was an area on the table in the cafeteria that just put the bag that people could pick up?
It was prior to COVID.
Well, we have to be very careful with it. There's very strict guidelines to have it. Right now, you cannot have a shared table at all.
Right, but then I guess, you know, with the bag and bundle up.
Yeah.
And, you know, but you still have to, at the end of the day, kind of toss those if nobody gets the box come by and get them.
But the garden...
Those that we have done, as long as they have not been out of the cooler or whatever, we hold those back and reuse those another day.
Okay.
As long as we keep them in the cooler. As long as we have not passed that out. Yes, ma'am.
But even if the student were to grab a bag, walk through the line, walk straight into the trash can and drop it in, we still get a reimbursable fee rate from the reimbursement program. So we're not losing money if they were to throw it away at all.
So at this point, we're still good?
Yes.
Not, not losing money, that's good. You know, in high school, those, you know, sometimes they are unpredictable of what they'd like to eat. And even middle school.
Now, we have added a second, one of the, we added an item every day. If we want high school worker to have a option. So like recently, we're having with Sonia, they may have their chicken wings with it. So we have added that now.
So is the lunch more of a hot meal and breakfast more of a cold meal?
Yes, the mixture. We have sausage biscuits and grapes coming up, grapes coming back. And, um, and then, you know. So yeah, we definitely have, just as, we have our regular menu almost exactly the same as last year this time.
So is the lunch meal, is it still served in the bag?
Yes, breakfast and lunch are back.
That's what I...
Has to be served as a unit.
I can tell you that.
Everything's in the silverware, the condoms, everything's in there, so, you know, napkins.
It's a chicken pie.
Yes, ma'am, pink pies back.
Favorite is...
Ms. Tannen, anything?
So are we charging for some meals?
No, ma'am.
No. No charging for breakfast or lunch? No. Okay. Except for the extras like Ms. Knight asked about.
Yeah, we're not giving their, no, we're not, we're not exchanging them at all right now.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
That, that is a good point. People would wonder if it's free, why am I getting a meal? Because they would charge for, you know, for their extra.
Which would be an excellent time not to allow charging.
Yes.
When you're already giving them free meals. But everybody eats for free. If you want extra, you can pay as you go.
Well, and during the school year, if it's a sales like that, they can't, they, they cannot charge that. So they have to look it up. And like I said, they would have to go where they're doing the point sale, look the child up if they had money on their account, you know. And all of this is when they're trying to get the kids in and out as quickly as possible and stay spaced apart or, you know, it's just another, you know, the steps that my staff has to go through every day to get the food out is they're tired. I went with them last week and behind the mask, they just look exhausted. I kind of broke my heart a little bit, to be honest. They were just, I could tell they were tired because suddenly you have to pack it up. They were kind of making a little sign of it. You box it, you bag it, you wrap it. They've been doing that since March. And so it's a lot that goes into it. So then if you add an extra step to that, that's just, it's hard without more people. And we, we can't do it.
We appreciate everything you're doing, knowing that you won't add it. Just, you know, if you decide you want to start selling diapers, it would be an excellent time to not have to come to the board and say, hey, we've run up some school debt from charging, especially if they're eating for free.
We can move it on, relaunch of twenty twenty.
Thank you for all you did.
Uh, Board, we updated the website this morning with our numbers. Uh, I will tell you that even updated beyond that, unless something is updated overnight, uh, tomorrow morning, uh, we would start with three students who are out of positive tests and one staff member. There are others that are affected again, as we know, with isolation from being around close contact. But again, that is an extra safety measure that we've never done with any other sickness, to my knowledge, ever. And so, and from that, it appears to be working. And we have had no clusters of students and no school spread so far. We do begin tomorrow with our elementary students coming back on our revised schedule. Again, questions that I've had have answered during this time, as well as, again, the health department is handling the notification. If some, anyone believes that they've been in close contact, have not been contacted, they can contact the health department for that information. Again, they're the ones with the training and the staff to do that. So if anyone has a concern, that's who they would reach out to. If anyone has been exposed or has a positive test result from the health department, any of those things, again, those people can contact the health department or they can contact their personal physician for their recommendations with that. Again, we know that personal physicians have a lot of your historical records, know what you may be at risk for or not, and that can provide additional course action. But if anyone has any questions, that would be their primary contact. Again, uh, our employees are encouraged to contact us just as soon as possible so that we can work through proper leave, uh, because there are special leaves available for staff members during this time in addition to the school sick leave. And we want to make sure that those things are coded correctly so that we can trade our clothes as fairly as possible during these times. I did run just some overall numbers. Again, these are cumulative numbers that will always go up, but people will wonder about percentages. So far, point two-three percent of our students have tested positive. So less than one-fourth of one percent. So point two-three percent of our students have tested positive. And two-point-zero-one percent of our staff has tested positive. So again, those numbers are extremely low for our district. And again, matched up with what the Department of Health and Human Services has told us about the lack of positive test results in younger age children. And that's playing out in our district as well. And if you have any questions, Ms. Knight?
Not at this time.
Ms. Spencer?
So you're saying if we have, if you feel like you have it or you've been specialized, you would need to contact the health department? And then it's just...
If, if you're an employee and you, if you go to your private physician and test there, the health department will get that information within twenty-four hours. But you can't speed up that process by calling them and saying, I have... But you can speed up that process by calling them and saying, I've tested positive today at my primary care physician and then they will start to contact trace immediately. If you don't, the health department gets that information overnight and they would contact you. But you can't speed up that process. But as an employee, if you've tested positive or if the health department has contacted you and says that you've been exposed, they can reach out to Ms. Jessup so we can make sure they take the appropriate leave.
But is the doctor responsible for contacting the health department?
They enter the information, I believe, again, this.
In a database.
In a database that's uploaded overnight and the health department gets those results next day.
Ms. Snyder?
Um, but Dr. Rice, if an employee, that, if they choose to just go to their doctor, they can do that and then report it to Ms. Jessup and then it will be followed up by the health department if it's a positive test. But if they feel they've been exposed, they have the right to contact their personal physician as well, correct?
Yes, ma'am. If they feel that they've been exposed, absolutely, they can contact their personal doctor. Again, they may have underlying health causes that no one else knows about other than their primary care physician that may have, you know, may have some advice for them for being exposed based on their current health needs.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, a couple of other questions, Dr. Rice. Our website has one set of numbers, but then other reports we're getting have different numbers. Can you explain the difference in the reports?
Yes, ma'am. There's delays. Uh, but when, say for example, a, and I'm going to have to look at the calendar here to make, to give myself a, a good example. Today is the 19th. If a student were to start getting symptoms on October 14th, Wednesday, last Wednesday, and they went through and just stayed home with symptoms and did not go get tested and then on Monday, when, today, when you got tested and they were to get a rapid test result this evening and the health department find out about that, their, if their first symptom started the 14th, their start date would go back to the 14th, the start of symptoms for their 10 days. So if the health department found that out today, this afternoon, I would edit into my report this afternoon, which would go back and change the numbers for last week from the 14th through this week. We might find out about a situation when there's only one or two days left on the 14th. They may have just stayed home with a cough and then it got worse and worse and worse before they finally went to the doctor and got tested. And so sometimes there's a real delay in finding out when, because you don't know when somebody goes to get tested. And so there's a delay in reporting which skews the numbers at times.
So is there any chance that you could update the website daily or as you are made aware of changes?
I, I could if I'm available every day to be on a high of date pad. Uh, I take the responsibility of that work with the health department, Ms. Jessup, in keeping that updated for the site. And I've said we would do that once a week. Again, because, you know, sometimes there are things that call the superintendent's attention for 12, 15 hour stretch and I may not get to update it. So I would hate to make a promise that I can't keep. And I will say that this morning, when I was in there updating the website, there were, I could see, actually, I didn't realize I could do this, but I could see that employees were looking at it. So they were expecting it to be updated on Monday morning and they were looking at it on Monday morning. If I say that every day is going to be done in three and I'm detained for some reason, that can cause frustration and stuff as well. Again, our numbers are extremely low as a district and I think the once a week reporting is, is doing enough to show the picture of what's really occurring. Uh, but I mean, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to updating more often, but I would hate to make a promise that it's going to be updated at a certain time every day just because, I mean, even again, I, I look at the Facebook page and Stotz County Health Department look at their numbers every day and some days it's not updated every day. Uh, and it may come out the next day and there's a few times I've had to call and ask for if they missed a day. But things happen and sometimes you just don't get to update every, everything doesn't work out like the plan that you wanted when you left the house. Uh, and there sometimes are delays, but I know I can do it weekly on that Monday morning. Uh, it's usually a great time to get that done before more things happen. That's why I chose that route.
Okay, so currently it's saying that we have three staff members who have, who are positive?
That is throughout this entire month. That's cumulative for the month. As of tomorrow, we would have one active case tomorrow.
Okay, but on another report, there's seven listed in a certain day.
On a certain, and I'm not looking at that reported problem, but is that a cumulative report or is that for that week, in that week, previous week? Because now down today, we've got down to recoveries, down to one active staff member today who's active.
Well, I mean, can you see how that's misleading to the public where one day we had seven active cases? At least, but then our weekly report is just going three cases.
Another recovery before it's on.
I'm sorry, I, I missed that.
I'm, I'm saying that there's recoveries as well. And so you may have seven cases on a Wednesday, but then the next day there's three recoveries after they've served their 10 days out and recovered with no symptoms. And so that's seven, three recovered, now down to four and three others recovered, then you're down to one. So again, that report on, that we report on every Monday is a cumulative report that have tested positive in the month of October, uh, is the current report we're working on, which will go up, 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 up the entire month because we don't report the recoveries there. But then in November, we start fresh with those numbers. But we're not reporting, on that report, we're not reporting active cases. We're reporting cumulative cases for the month.
So I guess it's just how you choose to report it. It's not necessarily correct for any given day.
It's correct for what the report is like, a cumulative report for the month. There, there's a thousand ways to report it. I mean, we could report daily the active cases, we could report daily the recovery cases, we could report monthly the recovery, I mean, there's just multiple ways, but to give this public a snapshot and looking at, we've done monthly reports for cumulative reports for that month to kind of, again, show a reset at the beginning of the month as to how many tested positive that month.
Well, given the two different reports, um, I think it's very misleading to the public and parents um, how many cases we are actually dealing with in Stokes County schools. I understand the percentage overall is, is very low and we are very fortunate for that, but there's more going on than we are, um, letting people know.
Well, I mean, there's not, there's not more reporting, uh, reporting the cumulative reports, which is encompassing everything that is going on. That's why I did that style of report to the public. Because just listening today, that one staff member is out is not a full idea of what is going on this month. So that's why the public report is a cumulative report to show the full picture of what's happening. What I just mentioned is a snapshot report of today and tomorrow morning, what we're expecting to walk into school with, with three students out and one staff member. That's a snapshot report, which I don't think does show the full picture. So I tried to show what the full picture report is with cumulative reports.
Um, and one additional question, a cluster is defined as how many, five?
Five in an area in a same time period with connections. So it's not five, you know, at school A over a six month period. It's five connected cases in a location.
And that would include students and, it could include students and staff, correct?
And it could, and that would be determined by the health department.
So.
And we have not had any clusters according to the.
Not, not necessarily, let's just say, um, okay, just school A. School A could have five active cases potentially, but if they were not on the same side of the school, potentially it could not be considered a cluster?
Yes, ma'am, that could be the case that, you know, if there was, you know, a data manager in the school that did not see any students who had a case and a social worker that had not, is assigned to a school uh, that had not been there in several days, had a case. That could be two cases, but since they've not been around anyone else, a determination could make, could be made that they were not involved in the cluster. But if they had been a connection with three other cases, then the health department could determine that that's a cluster. But if they're not connected, then it would not be a cluster. And there's also a timeframe in there again, but again, that's all training that the health department has to make those determinations.
Okay, so just another example, we could have like two kindergartners positive and three fifth graders possibly, and that could still not be defined as a cluster?
Depending on the situation, if the health department determined it was not, it would not be a cluster.
Okay, okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, and can you speak to any rumors about the governor possibly? Um, do you know anything about him possibly, um, putting more restriction or going back on restrictions for schools in the near future? Have you heard anything in your, at your superintendent level meetings?
I have not. They have been very closely looking on that. I do believe that this Friday, the latest governor's order expires this Friday. So I expect another announcement this week, whether or not that includes school or not. We will have to wait and find out, but I, I do not have any information and not heard even any rumors as to what he made beside this place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the action agenda. Here, motion to approve personnel and coaching reports.
I made a motion to approve personnel and coaching.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rogers, and that is with that slight adjustment recommended to us?
That is the amended personnel report with one name exception. All those eventers signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Board members, we have two pieces of information to share with you this evening. One item I'd like to touch on, please be aware, we did have certain issues on Tuesday that have been preferred as voting locations. Those include Alphada, Southeastern Middle, Germantown Elementary, Elementary, Pinnacle, Maxi Rattles, South Bay's High School, and Pioneer Grove in Middle. You also have some fun rates, one of the few. You have some items that we have now put up on vert deals, Sunbury Island, have a list of those. And you also have in your packet, first month PMR for you to review. Are there any questions?
Snyder?
No, sir.
Ms. Bassett?
Uh, no, I didn't want to announce an introduction. Um, Ms. Boltech, have you heard, is it still wanting to take virtual, the, um, downtown school board session?
Yes, ma'am.
Every, uh, every time it works. That's it.
And that, to my knowledge, they have not changed from the virtual yet. If they do, they've not left us.
Ms. Snyder, any questions?
Is this with the, all of the information items?
What's that?
Are we allowed to ask questions on any of the information items?
You got one.
Um, Dr. Rice, do you have a, um, is our percentage of, um, Plan B and Plan C students still around 70, 30?
Ms. McGee, I got it on the spreadsheet. I don't have that in front of me. Uh, it is, I, I, to be honest, I can't speak to that intelligently right now. I'm not looking at that spreadsheet. I don't have access to it. I'd be happy to send the board an update, uh, as I have it. I don't know that the principals have updated that spreadsheet the last couple of weeks. Last time I asked them for that was probably about, about two weeks ago.
And I know.
If you could come to the microphone. Sorry. Your voice travels, but not throughout the county.
I'm sorry. It does not. And, um, with elementary moving into A, um, we've had some switches from some parents who were on B that wanted to move to A and then some parents who were on C and wants now to move to completely to Plan A. So we would really have to get numbers.
I'd be happy to ask the principals to update that spreadsheet and I will give you all that information when I have it.
The next meeting would be fine as well.
Okay.
And if you would, on the PMR, uh, could you prepare the, the school, each school, same as last year?
Yes, sir.
So you can count the seats if they're, like I said, a word cluster.
A group.
A group, okay. All right. We hear good then. Any questions to adjourn?
I'm making my own judgment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those eventers signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, thank y'all for coming out. Not safe, what's going on? Stay safe, stay safe.